Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting for May 22, 2017. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on May 18, 2017, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Mr. Mahmoud, may I have a roll call?
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santa Fante?
Here.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kins?
Here.
Mr. Trujillo?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm pleased to be able to share some wonderful news from around the district with our Board of Education and community members this evening. Recently, Hillsborough High School is ranked 16th best high school for athletics in New Jersey by Niche.com. The ranking is based on data from the U.S. Department of Education along with millions of reviews from students and parents across the country. Other factors that were considered for the ranking include the number of interscholastic sports offered, boys' athletic participation, as well as girls' athletic participation, and total expenses per student. This ranking is a testament to the dedication and determination of our student athletes, coaches, and parents. Thank you all for your hard work and congratulations. Congratulations also goes out to the Hillsborough Middle School Girls softball team. This past Thursday, the team came out victorious over Warren Hills by a score of 10 to nothing in the quarterfinals of the Central Jersey Junior Schools Athletic Association Championship. The team remains undefeated and will play their semifinal game tomorrow at Hillsborough Middle School at 4:00 PM. Way to go, girls, and Coach Rosenblum, and we wish the best for you and great luck in your game tomorrow. Thank you. The final piece of information to share with the board and the community is that I will have the pleasure to sit on a panel discussing school funding at Thursday's New Jersey School Boards Association Legislative Day down in Tretton. I look forward to participating in that panel. Joining me will be my friend and colleague, Superintendent from Newton Township Public Schools, Dr. Ken Green. It will be, it will be, we'll discuss a lot of different issues on school funding, and I believe it'll be broadcasted, so we'll have an opportunity to take a peek at that and share if you're not able to attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Board, you had some correspondence, you see it as listed. Now, I'd like to go to the approval of the minutes. We have, let's start with executive session minutes from May 22. May I have a motion?
Some move, nope, that's for May 8.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I always do this. Today's May 22.
Yes. Yeah, you're approving May 8.
Yeah. You should have put, you had to put that up at the top there.
Yeah, there you go.
It's like I've done that. All right, so for May 8.
Give me a second.
Okay. Tom and Brett.
God, thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Tom and Jen abstain.
Tom and God.
Okay. Now, let's go to the May 8 regular minutes. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Brett and Judy, all right, any discussion? Nope? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, let's move right to committee reports. Some of the committees met. Mrs. Haas, did Education Committee meet? I know they did, I read the minutes.
The Education Committee met on May 9, and as usual, we had several rousing discussions. First of all, we discussed the math curriculum revisions, which were mostly small, just revisions of language. We discussed several policies which are of interest. One is about service animals. One is an update on the class rank policy, and one regards the use of electronic communication and recording devices. These were all updates. So, we have that. We had a very minor discussion on the district calendar for 2018-19, and we're going to continue that into our next meeting, but we're working on it. We had a distribution of literature on homework and grading policy, which we'll get into more over the next two or three months. We had a very interesting discussion with our guidance director, Jessica Smedley, and we were talking about AP enrollment and AP testing, and the news was very, very good. Ms. Smedley shared that we have a 20% increase in the number of students taking AP exams this year, and we have about 500 test takers with 1,000 exams being taken. And we will have, oh, and we also had 18 to 20 students who were, who took AP exams that they did not take a class for, so they self-studied and they took the AP exam. We had AP Chinese offered for the first time this year. Four students took the exam. And we also discussed the Washington Post identifying us in the top 10% of the most competitive high schools out of 22,000 high schools based on AP classes. We're 14th in the state of New Jersey with a 93.9% passing rate. We also talked about, in next year's budget, there's an expenditure so that PSATs will be given to all 9th, 10th, and 11th graders. This information from the PSATs will be helpful for student course selection and identifying students with potential to take AP and honors classes in the future. And we talked about the policy for, you know, how kids can get into higher level classes. We also had like a very, very minor discussion about the possibility of putting public service announcements or something similar on our Genesis or other website possibilities for like potentially a drug prevention message. Perhaps when, you know, people are going to our website to look up information, you know, like when you play video games and you have to watch the commercial before the video game comes on, that kind of thing, just have a very, very quick, you know, here's the website, here's where you can get more information. Boom. So, that's the Education Committee for May 9.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas.
May I just make a quick clarification? Mrs. Haas, we're on the most challenging high schools in the country. We're ranked in the top 10% of the entire country, so our ranking is around 2,100 or so out of the 22,000. We're actually ranked 14th in the state of New Jersey for scores that are three or above on the AP exam in the areas of math, English, language arts, science, and social studies. And by the way, out of those four, those 13 that are higher than us, eight or nine are not regular admissions public schools. They are magnet or gifted high schools. So, when you just look at where we rank relative to other regular high school districts, I think we're in the top five. So, really, a very impressive report that came out of our AP data.
I'd like that news.
Yes, Mr. Cooper?
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, you can do it now.
You mentioned PSATs for 9th, 10th. Why is everybody taking it so many times? I took it once, I thought, I thought we offered it once, maybe twice.
Times, they are changing. So, right now, with the flux of graduation requirements and how they keep adjusting, there's still alternative ways to do what we need to do to get kids to graduate on time. So, we're, not to mention the practice, just the practice of doing so. So, for all those reasons, we're going to move forward with doing that and see how it goes.
Is it going to be required, or it's going to be?
We're going to try to give it in school, like on a Wednesday, I think Jess said.
Three times?
Different, not everybody has to take it every time, but it's just giving options. We'll, as, because now we put it into budget, so now we'll see how we're going to organize it and get the logistics set up. So, I can keep you all posted on that.
All right, thank you, Dr. Intunis. Okay, I'm going to give the operations, Operations Committee report, I'm going to do that today. That's okay. Operations Committee met on May 10. We had a number of topics. Let me go over some of them with you. We're still working on getting more air conditioning for Auton Road School. We're working on that. We had an update from Mr. Mahmoud on non-public school transportation. As we do every year, we're brainstorming on ways that we can provide that. We would like to provide it. It doesn't seem likely, though. Is that, would that be a fair characterization, Mr. Mahmoud?
We're trying still, Mrs. Cooper.
I know, I know, we're trying. We are really trying, it doesn't seem likely. We also had the update on the recent lead testing of the schools in our district. We talked about a legal matter. We talked about another matter that I can't talk about, and we are recommending that we renew Sedexo as the food service provider for the next school year at their customary contractual 2% management fee increase. We also talked about belonging to or becoming part of the Sustainable Jersey program, and we had a couple of other minor items. That was it, really? It's in your minutes if you wanted to ask any questions about it.
I just have a question.
Yeah, please.
I just have a question about the air conditioning?
Yeah, yeah, let's go.
And lack thereof at Aris.
Yeah.
So, as we're trying to figure out what to, you know, what exactly are we doing to help our teachers and students with that? Because it was quite a problem. Sorry. Last week in the heat.
Yeah, it was extraordinarily hot. The heat index was in the mid-90s in the classrooms. We contracted an air conditioning provider that actually placed, I don't know how the large, how tonnage was.
25-ton units.
Like, three 25-ton units, two at Aris.
And one at the middle school.
To provide greater cooling places at Aris, and that cooled both of those gymnasiums down. So, as things got hotter, people could cycle through those areas. It is not a fix for it.
Right.
It helps out. And we also did the same thing with one of those units at.
Middle school.
At the middle school in the cafetorium. So, they had, they had cooling.
Yeah, but what about, sorry, but what about like the individual classrooms? I mean, I know my, so my son goes to this school, and he was saying, I mean, it was ridiculous, I mean, he came home and he was drenched.
Yeah.
It's just not healthy. It's not healthy for our children, it's not healthy for our staff. He said that a lot of the teachers brought in their own fan units, but I mean, there's got to be something that we can do.
The, the board is moving forward with a full comprehensive air conditioning plan for Aris. So, in fact, we signed off on the paperwork for both Aris as well as the middle school for their plan design, and we have on the agenda tonight, it's, I'm item number, Mr. Mahmoud.
Yeah, sure, sure, Dr. Schiff. It is a resolution on the Operations Committee, just to authorize the architect to move forward, Ms. Bogushevsky. We have been pushing the architect, and so has the Operations Committee, to expedite this. Our best scenario was we wanted the, the air conditioning to be done, you know, now, but that, it looked like, just with all the approvals between the local town approval, the Department of Education, but we're not done with that fight. I mean, our goal is to get those units in as soon as possible. Problem is the level of approvals to get it done with the design and all the bidding that we have to do, but we can rest assured that we're not, we don't want to walk, you know, there, we know this is something that's of urgency, and that is something we want to work on and get it done. Every time we met with the Operations Committee, there has been a lot of concern from board members saying, "Let's get it done, let's get it done soon." So, we definitely know that it has to be addressed. We also, I think, Dr. Schiff, we added a couple of one-ton units throughout the building here. That's not, again, the answer. So, we went into like, I think, about six, four or five classrooms, and I believe one faculty room where we actually went into the duck work and put in these one-ton units. It's still not the answer, but we, all of this stuff, and I don't say money replaces the comfort of instruction for students and staff, but the adding of the bills for both those one tons and those big units, they certainly come with, with an unbelievable price tag. We want to do it the right way, which is to add the units in the individual classrooms. So, we're working on it. It's, it's not an answer that you want to hear, that we don't have them in classrooms today, but we are working on it, and we're trying to get it to rush and get this stuff done.
Because I know some of the community, some of the residents in Hillsborough have offered to donate air-conditioned units to some of the classrooms, because I don't know the exact wing, but there's a wing over behind, I guess, the office. It is scorching. I mean, you can just, you can go around the corner and just, it's like you're walking into a flame. I mean, it's just that big of a difference, especially around noon.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with you. It's very, very hot, very uncomfortable.
Can students be allowed to bring water? I mean, what can the, I mean?
Yeah, yeah, certainly, they can, they can bring water and try to stay as cool as possible. The principals have a, an excessive heat schedule that they'll, that teachers can sign up and rotate into cooler areas. We were able to air condition as part of the east of the second floor of this building and the 102,000 wing of the high school. So, we, we have been making progress, but I agree with you, it hasn't been as quick as, as we would have liked it. But motion 12.6 today authorizes the board to, to direct our architects to do the bid specification work, the engineering design to get this completed. And if any family wishes to donate, they can't donate an air conditioning unit, but they can donate the monies towards an air conditioning unit so that we do the installation, we do the glazing work, we'll make sure that it's large enough, that it's appropriate in a classroom environment, which is different than someone's living room. So, we want to make sure that it's done right, and the board has a policy that nothing can be placed in a classroom physically or hung or built onto the school from an outside organization. They donate to us, and then we, we do all of the appropriate architectural work and make sure that it's sized right and that, and that it's not, it's not something that we'd have to give back or that doesn't do what it intends to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on committee reports?
I have a que, are we, is there, are there any more committees?
Oh, government meets tomorrow.
HR meets tonight.
HR meets tonight, but we'll report next time.
Okay. Just a question with regard to the calendar. I know that we need to get feedback from the employee units in terms of the calendar. I'd also like to get feedback from those that we serve, the students and their parents, in terms of options for calendars. So, for example, would we want to start class before Labor Day weekend in September? Would we like to start sessions in August, a week before Labor Day weekend, because we do have that flexibility? And I'd like to have input not only from the board, from the employee units, but also from, again, those that we serve, the students and their parents. Because I know that we have a lot of constraints, we do it every, every year, where we've got that weekend, we've got that weekend November where there's day on, a day off for Election Day, day on, and then you've got the NGA convention. We only have a limited number of snow days, which we usually have to eat into, and then, you know, we're ending, you know, third, late third week of June. So, you know, I'd like to get feedback from, from others in terms of where, if there's other things that we would like to do with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I forgot, Mr. Trujillo went to the delegate assembly on Saturday, and I don't know if you wanted to say something about that.
It was really interesting. I think about 157 school board members were in attendance, and we covered resolutions. The first one was about charter schools, but was directed back to committee, and then the second resolution was regarding a shared superintendent, and that one was pretty straightforward, and it was approved. So, basically, there would be no limit, like a no minimum term for shared superintendent services.
Good. And how, what, did you enjoy it?
I did, and they were actually like, it was scheduled from 9 to 12, and they finished at like 12:05, so it was very impressive.
Can't beat that. All right, thank you. All right, so I think that does it for committee reports. Let's go for comments from the public. This is never done right, but action, I guess it's Action Agenda or New Business, is that right, Mr. Mahmoud?
Yes.
Action Agenda or New Business. Come to the podium and remember to state your name and address.
My name is Roseanna Julie. I'm a mother of a high school student, and my question to you today is, about a couple of months ago, there was an active discussion here regarding the wrestling coach and the wrestling program, and I have not heard anything back regarding an update of the status of the wrestling coach. And my concern is, we're ending the school year, and I would like to know if we have a coach in place, because last year, our children suffered by the time they had a coach implemented to really train them during the summer. My son's a senior, he's been wrestling since five years old, this is his last year, and we really want to make it count. So, I have a lot of concerns regarding not only the coach, or who the coach will be, but the program is a program in jeopardy. That's my question. And I have not received an update from the principal or anybody else. And I also serve as a treasurer for our club's, Takedown Club, and because my son is a senior, a lot of the parents look to me for those answers, and I don't have any answers to give them. It's quite frustrating. So, that's why I'm here tonight, to see if there is any updates you can provide me.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you for coming, thank you for your question. All of our coaches work on more or less one-year contracts, one-year assignment. We generally do not rehire coaches until one of the June meetings, in June. So, it's not on tonight's agenda, but I'm looking at our director of HR back there, Mr. Volpe, and I think it's going to be next, next meeting?
Typically, it's July.
Oh, typically, it's July. Okay, so I think it's typically, let me correct myself, typically July, but I think we've been trying to do it earlier this year, and we might be able to do it by the second June meeting. That's about all I can tell you on, does Dr. Schiff wants to add anything?
That's accurate, yep.
So, no concerns with the program falling apart as a whole?
No.
So, the wrestling program will be intact for next year?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, oh, definitely. We haven't heard anything, you haven't heard anything from the like director about the wrestling program, or any concerns at this point?
No, the wrestling program will continue.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any other from the public on the Action Agenda or New Business? Okay, for the board, we'll comment, we can comment during the Action Agenda. This year, this meeting, we have some different, different items that we usually don't have, because this is our mid-year reorganization meeting, which means it's the meeting where we reappoint some of our professionals and some of the other things that we, we do on a July 1st to June 30th timeframe. So, I'm going to actually, yeah, I was going to give it to, yeah, I'll give it to Dr. Schiff to do the reorg.
We put them all together?
Yeah, we'll do all together, but you can tell us what they are, Dr. Schiff.
Sure, well, I'll just read through them quickly for you. The designation of signatories for general operating payroll account, section 125 account, high school athletic account, building rental account, and investments, as well as the designation of the Beacon and the Courier-News as our official newspaper of records. That TD Bank and a variety of banks that are listed here will be designated depositories for school funds, that our auditors will remain VIBRIL and Associates, our school attorney will remain Fogarty and Hara, architect of record will remain Peret Samjin, school physicians are listed, as well as treasurer of school monies, broker of record, school warrants, board policies are being asked to be reapproved, as we do annually, as well as job descriptions, curriculum, school field trips, our teacher evaluation system, our NJSIAA Skyland conference schedule for the year, affirmative action officer and Title IX coordinator will be Mr. Volpe, 504 coordinator is Jessica Smedley, liaison to homeless students is Mr. Mahmoud. Board secretary and assistant secretary will continue to be Mr. Mahmoud and Mrs. Zalinski, and our attendance officer, Bonnie Corso.
All right, that was a lot of items. It's 9.1 through 9.21 on your agenda. May I have a motion? Prove that one? Chen, Tom?
Got it.
Any discussion on any of the items? Yeah, Mrs. Haas.
Does Amboy Banks still exist in Hillsborough?
We always have this question about a bank. It's always one bank.
Well, yeah, I mean, they've, they've been out for a while.
On New Amwell Road? Where are they?
On New Amwell Road.
I don't know.
They used to be on New Amwell, right by the Royce Field Swim Club.
Yeah, right by the Royce.
But that's now Constitution Bank.
Oh, Constitution Bank.
Right. It doesn't necessarily have to be a bank in town, Mrs. Haas, so I believe Amboy Bank is probably a bank that we still deal with, but not necessarily for our main banking, but it doesn't have to necessarily be a local bank in the Hillsborough Township.
Okay, cool. Good question, though.
It is.
Mr. Kinst.
On, for 9/14, the field trip destinations going forward, I know that when we approve the field trips, we approve them for specific grades, because some field trips destinations are more appropriate for elementary level, some are more appropriate for high school level. If we, not necessarily for this one, but moving forward, if we can keep track of what grades we approve field trip destinations, and keep track of that, please. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, that list builds every year. I don't think we ever remove anything from the list, do we?
And I think when, when the board does approve them, and correct me if I'm wrong, when, when we do approve them, we're approving them with the knowledge of kind of which grades they're for anyway.
Yes, we do. However, that would mean, if we're going to, if we're going to be very specific about the grade, that every time a different grade wanted to go to the same place, we'd have to reapprove it for that grade. And I don't know that we want to get into doing that.
Okay, fair enough.
Or, or we can, when we approve it, you approve it for a grade level or a range of grades? Because there, there are some that, like I said, are more appropriate for more mature students and some that are more appropriate for younger students.
Yeah.
So, whether it's, you know, K through 5, K through 6, whatever the range is, if we can do that.
Okay.
Can I ask, that is just referred to Education Committee as an agenda item, we could talk about how we can work, work through it, make sure we have clear direction on it.
Okay.
Everybody take a little, we have motion.
All right, so we have motion second, we had some discussion. Any further, okay, roll call, Mr. Mahmoud, on 9.1 through 9.21.
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santa Fante?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Mr. Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Education?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel and related expenses, the superintendent HIB determination list, the approval of an overnight field trip. This is one of those examples, Mr. Kinst, I, I believe, Track and Field High School at Harbor. Motion to approve the revised math curriculum as reported out of committee, as well as approve teachers participating in Ume and the PLC Summer PD Institute, approve policies as listed, bilingual ESL three-year program plan, approve out-of-district placements as listed, and changes to out-of-district placements, approve staff for the ELL Summer Enrichment Program, and that's all in this section.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Got it.
Any discussion on education? Yeah, Tom.
For item 10.1, professional travel-related expenses, if, if, I'm trying to think, recall from, from the history, if there's been a request, and this may be a new request, is that as we go through the year, if we can keep track of what cumulative amounts that we approve, because I believe that there's a budget limit, so I just want to see, you know, how well we're, we're tracking with that.
Okay.
And then, and a question with regards to 10.5. This is for the Ume and the PLC Summer Institute, and I'm fully, fully supportive of professional development. A question I have is, of the 40 people who we would be approving, are there any who have already received training in such a way, and are there opportunities for, if, if there are, for others who haven't?
Yes, but it's different every year. It's not the same training every year. So, we could have somebody who's been there from the very beginning, that's gone four times, and we always have new people, and we also often recently have a waiting list, too.
Right, and it's because I saw that waiting list that I, I'm hoping that we're not sending And I've got one other item, but I'm gonna, I'll let other people, if they have other questions.
Anything else on, anybody else on education? Tom, it's all you.
Yeah, um, this is actually, uh, policy number 5430, class rank. I think this is actually a policy that we have flexibility on, that there aren't state or federal mandates. So, and the last time that we reviewed this was, uh, you know, almost 10 years ago, at least when it was approved. So, um, there's a couple of items on here that I think that we should provide some flexibility. So there's, there's a, um, I think I understand what the intent was for basically not providing class rank to the students or for colleges for admissions. But I see a dichotomy between military academies and general colleges. I think there should be consistent. And, and I think it would be beneficial for students if they have the option to be able to see what their class rank is. And of two, two of my children, one's graduating, one's a freshman, I asked. When I grew up, class rank was, was public, everybody knew. But if they would be interested in knowing what their class rank was, both of them said yes, one a little bit more so than the other. But they were fine with it. It's just, just, uh, just the one. So I, I think there's, I think there's value. You know, most of life is a meritocracy. It's not, um, and, and how well you perform, that's, that's one factor for doing that. I think it's also with, um, one of the values that was identified during the community input was being able to build resilience for students. And having a student be able to have the option of seeing what their class rank, I think, can help contribute to that. But I think we should, I think we should provide an opportunity for students and/or parents to, to be able to see what their class rank is. And we have a student here who's sitting on the board, and I'd like to get her, her perspective as well.
Way to put her up as a note.
Well, my friends, my friends, I talk about class rank often because it is like a known thing in our school. And I'm a junior, so like, it kind of does apply to me a lot. But I personally wouldn't want to know my class rank. I mean, it's nice because like, a lot of my friends do, but like, a lot of my friends are geniuses. So like, they know that they're up there. But I think that it's nice to have the option, but I don't think all the students would want that.
And then, um, the other thing, I was glad to see that the, um, the waitings for the different classes are coming down. You know, before we had a waiting of 1.5, uh, and now it's 1.15. Do we need to address any courses that are concurrent enrollment with RVCC on this? Is that considered honors or college prep, or is that considered advanced placement?
It depends what the course is. If it's an advanced placement course, it's advanced placement. If it's an honors course or CP course, that's what they get. Vernon Valley gives their own transcripted credit for it. We only give high school credit for it. Whatever, whatever class the concurrent enrollment is in, which we have in all of them. We have in college prep, CP, NAP.
So are any of courses that we teach as concurrent enrollment with RVCC is at the high school? We treat it at the high school level. The college provides the credit on theirs in their transcripts. So is there, is there an equity issue where if somebody's taking an actual college course within the district, but it's actual college level, uh, and that's, and we're not giving in any additional waiting?
That would be the AP course.
What's that?
That would be the AP course.
It would be equivalent to an AP course. Okay.
Well, you, you bring up, you bring up an important, yeah, you bring up an interesting point. What happens if our CP is actually?
A college course.
A college level, then it's not prep. It's college level.
Right.
And wouldn't that be a nice problem to have, actually? So we've had, had some of those conversations. Currently, there are no courses that are CP that are offered for concurrent enrollment. And if eventually we go there, we'll have to make a change.
Okay. Alright, great. Back to you.
Okay, okay, I get it. I think, it's not CP anymore, just be CP. I got it. Yeah, Mr. Cooper.
Just build, oh, you wanted to respond to him.
Mr. Cooper.
I have a question building on it. Currently, we don't give the rank out to admissions, correct? That's the current policy. Do we give any kind of percentage? Like, top 10% or any of that? I know-
That's how, quartile, anything like that?
Nothing, nothing. No information whatsoever, other than their actual transcript.
There's, there's, there are some scholarship programs, such as the military and some other New Jersey state scholarships that require a class ranking. And I think those are the only areas in which it's used.
Is this pretty, can maybe, Dr. Schiff, could, is this pretty consistent across the board in high schools? That they don't release this information, or are we being unique?
Yeah, we're, we're not unique in terms of, of, of moving backward, not having class rank and narrowly placing it.
Well, we have class rank, we just don't-
Narrowly, narrowly assigning the class rank for things like, as Mrs. Haas indicated, for, for scholarships and other type of things. But, um, no, we're not, we're not blazing a trail with, with our class rank policy.
From a benchmark perspective, for example, um, the Somerset County Vote Tech, they include the class rank on their transcript. And they provide that information to admissions for colleges.
So there are a lot of things that go into this, things like a lot of our kids take classes outside of Hillsborough. We can't, it waits for that. We, we have to do that differently. Essentially, students can end up buying their rank if they, so that it's really, really complicated. It's a very specific and complicated situation that it's not something we want to rush back into. Certainly something to look at, but not anything we would want to make a decision on like this and rush back into for a host of reasons.
But how do we treat them, then? Because we do have class ranks. It's just not public class rank. So how do you, obviously, you gotta deal with those issues of those people going outside, of the people going to Vote Tech, of the people-
Absolutely.
How do we?
And I think that the best person to speak to this most eloquently would be our Director of Guidance, who has a host of information about that. And she did come speak with education. She can certainly do that again, but it's absolutely worth the conversation.
I mean, honestly, we had a very vigorous discussion on the subject 10 years ago. And it, you know, it was something that a policy, the then Policy Committee discussed for over a year. And when it came to the board, it was very, you know, vigorously debated and very sharply on both sides. Basically, you know, your position was well represented. And on the other side, what people were saying was that but for, let's say, the top 10 in the class, many of the grades are so close that you could be number 200 in the class or number 400 and have a tenth of a percent of difference in your GPA. And that's why some people felt that, you know, it, it might turn out to be a demoralizing thing for everybody but the top 10 in the class. So these were the, you know, that was the nature of the discussion back then. And also, there was, 10 years ago, overwhelming movement away from it by other schools. I mean, I think at the time, we were one of few who were holding on to it.
Yeah, I mean, that decision was made 10 years ago. 10 years has passed. And, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not advocating that it makes it public. We, 10 years ago, made the decision that we will not provide it. I'm asking that we, that we consider, I'm not asking to change how the ranks are changed. I'm just asking, can we give the option for those students who are, who wish to understand what their rank is, to find out what it is? And have the option for providing that rank to, to colleges who are asking for it and they, and they, the student, wish to share that with that college? That's all. Thanks.
I personally agree.
Do they give, they, but do they give like rank, like, not rankings, but do they say, here's this person's GPA and their transcript, the average for Hillsborough? Like, they get, do they get those numbers? So they could kind of figure out, okay, this person's in the top 10%? Or they don't give any of that? Just the GPA?
Just the individual transcript you figure out.
I mean, one other comment. I mean, a lot of different school systems grade on different bases. I mean, some of them have a 4.0, some of them have a 5.0, some of them have a 7.0. And as far as the college, what Ms. Smedley was telling us was, when it all gets to the college admissions office, it all gets ground down to the basics anyway. I mean, was that a fair assessment of what she said? You know, she's saying that she recognizes that other schools have different systems. And they have to be able to put it into one system that tells them what it means to their college. So that they all have their own mechanisms by which they do that. So, you know, as much as we get ourselves into a tizzy over these things, it may not matter when it gets to where it's going.
But the class rank is based on the same system. So that's why the argument is almost better that the ranking, because, because having a 4.0, having a 3.9 here and having a 4.9 here might be a whole different thing. But being the third ranked one here and the third ranked one there, now I could say, okay, these people are comparable.
Well, what colleges like to say is that they take a look at the entire package.
I'm at that level. I understand. And sometimes it just comes to, can you pay your check and they'll take you? But I understand.
But, you know, it's very interesting because, you know, even the 4.9 here and there, everybody has a different weighting system.
Right, right.
So we're giving like, um, 1, 1.05, 1.1, and 1.15. Others might be giving 1, 2, and 3. And it makes a difference mathematically, I'm sure you recognize. So it, it's a complicated subject, and that's why it went on forever 10 years ago. Would you agree, Ms. Lisa? Dr. Lisa, excuse me. We were there.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, and while, and I totally appreciate that there was, it was well discussed. So we, we have the opportunities before us. We've got first reading. Let's, let's have, let's have a dialogue. Let's have it, as opposed to reading first week and then the second readings the week after, without that much discussion among board members or even input from community members.
Okay, but just, just to be clear, the changes that are in the document that was given to the board are just the elimination of the ones that do, uh, do not, um,
Don't exist.
Uh, do not exist anymore because those were criteria up till 2011.
We're, we're simply, we're currently revising it to match what we're actually doing. That's all we're, that's all that is. There's no other, it's just what we're actually doing. That's all.
But I, I think the argument is now's a good time, while we're revising it, to actually look at it after 10 years.
I've got to file this big. I'll bring it next time.
I can't wait.
Thank you.
Alright. So, uh, any further discussion? Education, or I'll ask for a, a roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of, of human resources to approve resignations and retirements is listed. Approve leaves of absences, approve revised contracts, revise non-tenure contracts, approve transfers as listed. Approve the appointments of substitutes, co-curricular advisors, and approve student teachers as listed. Extra period coverage and the renewal of instructional assistance for next school year. The renewal of HEA office personnel for 1718. Approve the renewal of clerical assistants and parking lot attendant for next year, as well as lunch aids, custodian, maintenance staff, and the summer athletic camps.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Brett and Tom. Any discussion? On the HR? None? I have nothing to add. Okay, so let's go right away for a roll call.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, operations.
Thank you. Um, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to approve monthly bills lists, the financials, line item transfers, renewal of Sigdesco as our food service management, um, system. Resent and approve the transportation contracts as listed. Approve professional service agreements for the facility project, as discussed before. And accept the donation from the Montgomery Flag Football League. Brandon Bender up two footballs for Woods Road School for their recess. And we thank the Benders and the Montgomery Flag Football Team for their donation.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on operations? Okay, roll call.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, thank you. What are we up to?
Comments?
Old business.
Old business? Okay, yep. You just tell me. You don't have to whisper. Alright, so, um, public, uh, comments from the public on old business or anything else?
Uh, good evening, Thomas Zabili, Nine Upper Neshanah Court. As I did at the last meeting, um, I see here that 10.10, uh, motion to approve the 2018-2019 calendar, district calendar, is still on here. And it was not, I know it was discussed, but not voted on. So I don't know if that was the same as last meeting. I would just like some clarification on that.
Sure, absolutely. It, it was put on the original agenda. But in, but before the board acts on it and votes on it, we need to make sure that the HEA and the HPSA have had a chance to review it and to give comment. They haven't had the opportunity to do so, and that's why it was removed.
So was it intended that prior to this meeting, there would have been that discussion?
Exactly, and it was put on prematurely.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, Laurel Drive. Just had a question from the Action Agenda, subject 10.10, which was the ELL Summer Enrichment Program. That was approved, but on my agenda and the one that I have over there, the rates are blank for the employees that are listed there. And I wanted to see if that had been corrected or if that was something available on yours, but not on ours.
Which number?
Uh, 10.10, which is the ELL. This one, it's listed as ELL, so I apologize. Same as the one that I just pulled over there.
1011 on the old printed one.
Okay, then we'll find it.
For the nurse.
Okay, mine, I don't know if we're waiting for backup on that?
For 1011 or 1010?
There apparently is.
Or 1010. It's the ELL Summer Enrichment Program.
See, mine says 1011.
Yeah.
Mine says 1010.
That's irrelevant. I think we want to know the details of the, of the thing.
Was ever given out, have it as number 11, 1011?
Mr. Volpe, you have that? I'm not sure we, we can pull it. It's already been acted on. We'll, we'll make sure that the minutes reflect accurately those, those rates.
At the next meeting?
We'll correct it at the next meeting and make sure-
Okay, so there'll be a motion to approve that with the rates posted, correct?
Absolutely.
Sure.
So we'll, we'll put that on.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Did you got them? You know what the rates are?
They're easy to find.
Oh, okay.
It's in the contract. It's no problem.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Alright, any, any, anyone else from the public? Alright, for the board, for old business or anything you've got? Mr. Kinst?
Yeah, real quick, on the, um, on the, the report that went out on the top athletic programs at the high schools were, um, number 16 in New Jersey. I believe when I looked at the data, we're actually number one within Somerset County.
Yeah.
So, um-
Pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Thank you. Very good. Anybody else? Judy, you're talking. You want to say something? No? Dina, you're pretty quiet tonight, no?
Dana.
Dana Bogushevsky?
Well, it's not something old. It's just something that I just wanted to share. So, um, last Thursday here at Eris, Mr. Angelo conducted an amazing performance with, um, his jazz band. And it was a pretty great performance. So I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Angelo.
Thank you. Awesome. Alright, uh, thank you, everyone. I'm gonna ask for adjournment in a second. I just wanted to say, um, I want to reiterate one more time. We're working on air conditioning. If you were really hot in schools last week, uh, I apologize personally. I don't want you to be hot like that. Uh, so we're working on it very hard. It's a little more complicated than we thought it was going to be originally. But Mr. Mahmood is on the case. My old buddy over here is gonna get it done as, just as soon as we can. Alright, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.